Five of us is when one of us can't see straight, the other ones can take in. So Vice Chair Merrill is going to be handling most of the agenda tonight. And so if you'll bear with us, she's going to do that. And we'll get out of here a lot quicker than me trying to read tonight. Vice Chair Merrill.
Okay, we will begin with the invocation and I will turn it over to Commissioner David Williams.
Thank you, Commissioner Merrill. If you're so inclined, please bow your head in prayer with me. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our county. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those with whom we disagree and to treat all persons with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your children, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
If everyone would please stand, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Young lady that's here with 4H.
I was getting ready to announce.
Oh, I'm sorry.
(laughing). Atera Pendleton, youth voice participant. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to informal comments and... Oh, please come forward.[143.34][143.34](laughing). Come around.
No, I think she's had something on board speaking. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.[151.19][151.19](laughing).
Hi, as it stated, my name is Atera Pendleton. I've been a member of 4H for about a year. In the beginning, I didn't know much about 4H. Somebody just told me that there was this 4H Congress. It was a college trip and I was getting to meet many people around my age. I said, "Why not? I want to go to college. I wanted to explore many colleges in North Carolina, so why not?" But after that trip, I wanted to know more. And as I started to know more, I realized that 4H isn't about college trips or just meeting youth. It's about getting out of your comfort zone and learning many new programs based on your interests. For example, when you're interested in agriculture, we have our daily 4H Expo, which you get to compete with cattle, sheep. If you're interested in cooking, they have cooking clubs at the Union County Agricultural Center. Like I said, 4H to me is a way of getting out of my comfort zone and just being a kid. For example, I'm a member of 4H Teen Council, so we get to do many, many fun things such as escape room and just being part of 4H Expo, going to many different college tours. It's just a fun experience in general. In the future, I want to be able to run for District Council and discover many, many more activities and programs in the community, but also in the state. I thank you. Thank you for having me today, and I look forward to learning more about you guys and talking to you more at the Youth Delicate Breakfast on August 26th. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here.[261.12][261.12](applause).
Ms. Pendleton, if you wouldn't mind just coming around, she'd get a photo with all the board members. We appreciate that.
Let's all go down.
Go down.
Are we getting everybody?
You give us hope.[301.22][301.22](laughing).
One more.
Right here, one, two.
Thank you so very much.[319.12][319.12](applause).
I was going to let you have my seat.[344.34][344.34](laughing). Okay. So that does bring us to informal comments. Do we have one person that signed up tonight? We have Christine Surratt.
Correct.
If you would please come forward and state your address and phone number, and you'll get three minutes.
My name's Christine Surratt. I live at 3818 Carrick Church Road. My phone number, 704-609-2346. And I am here tonight on behalf of His Perfect Love Ministries. You may know that our nonprofit organization as House of Pearls. We have been in Union County since 2009, but I'm going to back up a little bit and go into that story instead of leading out with that story. As you all are aware, there is a national crisis due to drug and substance abuse. It affects every area of our lives. House of Pearls is a long-term addiction ministry, up to 12 months. We are in heart restoration program where the women live at no cost to them and learn through the healing power of the Word of God through intensive Bible studies and teachings. The residents are also taught various life skills. We have certified counselors that volunteer to help the women work through all their life issues. HOP is the only facility in Union County that is dedicated to women only and is free. We accept ladies that have been incarcerated, court ordered, detox centers, homeless, as well as those who come of their own free will. All of these women have one thing in common, they're struggling to overcome addictions and bondage. Our mission statement summarizes it, "To provide a safe environment for women to heal, restore, and rebuild their lives." We have a house in Wingate that houses nine ladies. We have a house in Lancaster that one of the local churches there gave to us that houses five ladies. And we recently bought a four-bedroom double-wide as our transitional home. So some would think with 20 beds, we have adequate resources. Not at all. It doesn't even begin to address the 10 to 15 letters a week that we get from ladies who are really needing help and want to see a change in their life. Because of the great need and the dedication from our Board of Directors and the leadership from our staff, we've been praying diligently and searching for property to expand our ministry. God opened that door last week to us, and we are under contract with 12-plus acres on Camden Road, so hopefully that will close in the next few months. Unfortunately, prior to 2019, our records were not kept the way they should have been. Since 2019, we have an 85% success rate of all the ladies who have completed our program. The completed program is a one-year program that rehabilitates them. We help them get restated their driver's license, obtain affordable transportation, get their GEDs in some cases, and a job placement before they graduate. Then they remain drug-free and alcohol-free, staying employed, being good examples, giving back to the community. We have an alumni program that is holding women accountable, too. Once they graduate, they meet on a monthly basis to hold each other accountable. They also serve homeless and other people that are addicted right now. Our transition house that I mentioned earlier, it is another avenue that we use to keep ladies accountable. In our business, I hate to use that word, but in our ministry, if we have found that if the ladies go back into the same environment that they came out of, we know what's going to happen, the same results over again. So this transition home helps them give a place, a safe place to go once they've graduated the 12-month program. I'm going to step back now. Our program began as a dream and a direction of a Union County prison chaplain. Her name was Terry Merritt. In 2006, a group of men and women began meeting with her and praying about opening a halfway house for ladies in the Union County area. They met for a couple of years, and they were blessed with a lease in Wingate. The House of Pearls was dedicated and opened the doors October 4th of 2009. Just in speaking to a few people tonight, there's people in this room that still have never heard of House of Pearls. A lot of people know of Ground 40, which is the men's ministry in Union County. We are the equivalent women's ministry, but on a much smaller scale than what they have.
Thank you so much. Your time has expired, but thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to come tonight before the board, and if you'll just keep your information and reach out to us, okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do not have a public hearing tonight, so we'll go to staff recognitions. I'd like to recognize Andy Neff.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. This evening, we're here to recognize our two teams that competed in hydrant hysteria at the recent ACE Conference, which American Waterworks Association puts on in Toronto. This conference occurred from June 10th to 13th. I'd like to introduce the competitors at this time, so if you would all come up. On the men's team, we have Jordan Els and Justin Hunley. And you guys can come on up. And on the women's team, we have Beth Belk and Michelle McCarver from our office. The competition involves assembling a fire hydrant as quickly and as accurately as possible, and there's points taken off for mistakes that are made. This time around, our women's team finished fourth out of 18 teams, and the men's team finished fifth out of 30 competing teams. And this was a national-level conference, actually international-level conference frankly, because it took place in Canada with Canadian teams competing as well. So normally, I just talk a little bit about what they do, but this evening, we actually have a video for your viewing enjoyment. So if we could go ahead and do the video, we'll give you a much better idea.
Ready, set, go! That's all right, brother. Thank you for starting. Look at these teeth go, ladies and gentlemen. We are in hysteria now, let me smoke though. Hydrant hysteria, ACE 23. Now, as you can see, you've got the Union County Pine Tree on Hydrant 1. You've got the Westminster Bridge of the Rocky Mountain section on Hydrant number 3. We've got Hydrant 23. You're heading to East California, now we've got a section on Hydrant 23. You're on Hydrant 9, you're seeing some of the best of the best right now. Look at these, the banders are on, they're doing their high, they're one way through that higher level, finding the ride on, running on, hiding with the hydrant. These plow with the high, they're pushing, pushing up. You're seeing weather cats operating that, bonnet, you're seeing one right now. The safety plan, you're seeing hyped up. Lady on, that's a man, ladies and gentlemen, watching again. Safety and hyd, everyone, keep your hands where those string wrenches, getting the nozzle caps put on the bonnet. All your nothing, both trying to protect. These guys are doing right, he's hiding, left, he's losing. Yes, and here they go, ladies and gentlemen. We've got the hydrant honeys on number one, Monroe, Union County. Team Matt is right here on Hydrant number 3 with the Hydrant Valve Seat Ranch going strong. We've got the chicas from Aruba, California on Hydrant number 2, ladies and gentlemen. And you'll see these different techniques for how these women will put these hydrants together. The hydrant honeys are getting the main valve seat ranch installed, or the main valve seat installed with that wrench. You've got the nozzle caps going on for sound. You've got the safety traffic flames being put on this medallion hydrant from plow. You've got that. You've got some coordination with the coaches on alignment. They're wanting to make sure that these hydrants are absolutely facing forward. When Mike puts his laser level on it, it has to be forward. They are going to be meticulously putting on these nuts and bolts, tightening everything down with the ratchets and sockets, as you can see on Hydrant number 1 with the hydrant honeys. They're going through getting everything assembled, making sure everything is tight.
Come on, girls.
You have got your chicas from Aruba, California.
So that's how it's done.[928.82][928.82](laughter and applause). Before we... We'd like to get a picture with you, Mr. Chairman, if we possibly could.
Again, it's all of us.
Or then the whole...
They can all come up if they'd like.
Then the whole board, that'd be fine. I do want to point out that Jimmy Gillian, who's on the men's team, couldn't be here this evening for another commitment, but I'd like to go ahead and see if we can't get a good picture with all of you.
Yeah, and I'm going to have to say, when I was watching that, it looked like the little rascal sped up.[965.12][965.12](laughter). I said, "Are they speeding this up?" But that was actual speed. That's great. One, two, three. All right. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
I like it.[994.46][994.46](laughing).
This team represents all the good work that all of our employees do every day out and about for our citizens and ratepayers. So they're just the pinnacle of the abilities that all the employees that serve the county have and the dedication they bring to their job. Thank you.
Don't go anywhere, Andy. So I just want to have the board sort of recognize Andy here. Andy Neff is our Director of Operations for Union County Water. He's been with us for seven years. He manages all of the operations for the water and sewer facilities. And Andy is retiring from Union County. I believe at the end of the month, I believe, is when you're retiring. And I just want to recognize Andy and all the hard work he and his staff does, and he's done an amazing job getting these folks, keeping the morale up, as you can tell. These folks are motivated. They do a great job, and I just want to recognize Andy, say thank you for your work here with Union County and your dedication. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
It's a team effort, though.
Hey, Andy, I'd like to say, I've had the opportunity to work with you one-on-one, basically, at Copper River, and he has really represented us well down there. And you've been missed.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.[1088.02][1088.02](applause).
Board, that brings us to the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Madam, Ms. Chair, or Ms. Vice Chair, if you don't mind, I have an item. I'd like to put some clarification for the public, if you don't mind. So Item 23-399, that has to do with the Capitol Project Ordinance and the bond premium for the Union County Public Schools Bond. I need to clarify that the CPO is for the entire amount, $12.175 million. However, in the agenda item, it lists a number of projects. The school board is not actually asking to spend the money at this point in time on all of those projects. They do want to have the funds available for the overage for East Elementary School, which is $4.5 million at this time. That's the estimate. And the overage for Forest Hills High School, which is $900,000. They have some concerns that there could be some unknowns or other overages that they're not aware of, and they want to be able to evaluate those other projects and then obviously come back to us, and we'll determine whether they do meet the bond language on that. But the CPO is for the entire amount, $12.75 bond premium. However, they'll really only be using right now the overage for the time being, and I wanted to clarify that.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that being said, I do need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. We have minutes for approval. That was also included. We have information only. Okay, that brings us to business. Up first, we have lead and copper compliance program update. I will turn it over to John Chutak.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, appreciate your time this evening. I'm going to be brief tonight, or as brief as I can be, take about 15 minutes of your time and just give you an update on our lead and copper rule revision compliance program. So tonight, I'm going to cover briefly what the rule revision covers, what our compliance strategy is, kind of where we stand as far as process or implementing that strategy, what our next steps are, and then what future decisions we'll be bringing back to the board. I do want to be very clear, we're not asking for any decisions tonight. This is just information, making sure you're aware of what it is that we're doing. So jumping right in, the lead and copper rule revision focuses on a number of things. Obviously, lead, it's in the title. Where does lead come from? Why is it important? And what are we doing about it? Lead's not naturally found in drinking water. It comes from the materials that are used in the construction of drinking water systems and the corrosion of those materials. So a good example of this would be lead solder in copper tubing assemblies. Over time, water passes over that joint, and that lead in the solder can dissolve into the water stream and pass on through. Similarly, another good example would be galvanized piping. So over time, galvanized piping corrodes, and it builds solids on the interior of that pipe. And as water passes over it, it can dislodge those particles, and those would continue on into the drinking water system. Now, why is this important? Well, it's because lead has detrimental health effects on both kids and adults. So we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to address its presence in the potable water system. It's also important to understand that lead is an odorless and tasteless component in drinking water. So there's no sensory cue for the consumer to know that there's something wrong. So it's incumbent on the utility, which is the intent of the lead and copper rule in its original revision, as well as the proposed revisions that are here now. It's also important to understand that Union County is fully compliant with the current lead and copper rule, and that involves utilizing chemicals in the water treatment process to make sure that lead stays in place. So we're trying to minimize that corrosion potential within the system. We also routinely sample our water system for the presence of lead as the rule requires. Now, the rule is not new. It's been around since 1991. The rule revision was originally published in November of 19, with the effective date of the rule revision being about two years later in December of 21. Presently, the compliance deadline is mid-October 2024, or about 15 months from now. So what does the rule revision address? Well, it really focuses on four key areas, and that's identifying what service line materials a utility has in its system, sampling requirements, corrosion control treatment, and public education. So first and foremost, the rule requires the utility to determine what materials it has. You need to know what you have before you can do anything about it. Now, kind of a subpart of that is developing a lead service line replacement program, or an LSL replacement program. So if you were to find lead in your service lines, lead materials, or galvanized requiring replacement, you have to have a program in place to take care of the replacement of those lines. It also addresses sampling requirements. There are sampling requirements in the current rule. However, the revision changes those requirements to include sampling for not only schools but daycare facilities, so there's a focus on children. It also prioritizes where you conduct your system sampling to focus on areas where lead is either expected to be present, known to be present, or has the potential to be present. There's also a public education component to this rule revision, which really focuses on making information available to the general public to the greatest degree possible regarding service line materials, as well as system sample results. There's also some notification requirements in there, so there's, I should say, more concise reporting requirements for if you were to have a sample in the system come back above that action level, you need to notify your customers within 24 hours, so they're time-bound. And if you have a sample at a specific tap location, you have to notify the person at that residence or business within three days. It's as soon as practical, but no more than three days notice is required. So we've been working with a consultant, CDM Smith, to ensure that we meet all the regulatory requirements of the new rule revision. And as part of that, we've developed a compliance strategy focusing on these key areas of the rule, which are really developing, again, that service line inventory, how we would go about implementing a service line replacement program, and continuing our corrosion control treatment at the water treatment plants, because the rule revision requirements for that are consistent with what we do today. So we really don't have any changes there. And we're working on updating our lead sampling monitoring program to include those schools and daycares, as well as our system sampling points, in addition to developing a targeted public education and outreach effort. Sorry, didn't mean to skip over that. So where we are today is we've completed our initial data analysis on our service lines, and we've identified a total of 62,633 individual connections to the public water system. Now, it's important to understand that these service lines are split into two components. And there's a public side of that, which is owned by Union County Water, as you can see on the slide there, and that's between the public water main and the water meter. There's also a private side or a customer side that is privately owned, and that's between the water meter and the building plumbing. Just keep that fact in the back of your head as we go forward, because we'll touch on it again. But these service lines are put into one of four categories, and they're either lead, non-lead, galvanized requiring replacement, or unknown. So having completed the initial data analysis, how we approached this was to look at GIS information related to the age of the service, the structure that was on the property, if any, and the age of the water main. So using that and comparing it to the date that North Carolina banned the use of lead in potable water systems, which was March 1987, and we didn't use the March 1987 date, we allowed a year for implementation on that. So the cutoff date was actually March of 1988. We've been able to put 70% of our service connections in the non-lead category, and that's very important. The rest of them are lead status unknown. So you'll notice that we don't have any identified as galvanized requiring replacement, and most importantly, we don't have any positively identified as lead. We just have the two categories to contend with. So these are very positive results, because they indicate that there's a low probability that we're going to have service lines that are either lead or galvanized requiring replacement. So our next steps, as far as where we go from here, are, one, we're going to complete that service line inventory, and what that's going to take is conducting some field investigations to verify those service line materials. So we're going to be having Union County staff, as well as contractors, go out and physically verify that what these... go out and physically verify what these service lines are made of. That can involve looking in the meter box and seeing if you can see those service lines and what material they are, or physically exposing them on both the customer side of the meter and the public side of the meter. Now, since we're going to be out in people's front yards, or in front of their businesses, obviously, we're going to be announcing our intent beforehand with a public communication effort. And this will detail what exactly it is that we're going to be doing, and over what timeframe that's going to occur. We're going to use the data that we get from these limited field investigations, because if you look back, we had almost 19,000 that are unknown. We're not going to be able to go out and physically look at 19,000 locations before October of next year. That's a really heavy lift. So we're going to be doing this as a targeted approach. And what we're going to do with that data is we're going to put it into a system so that we can utilize machine learning to project what the materials are likely to be. This will limit our field investigation effort. And again, we want to make sure that we've completed the service line inventory by that regulatory compliance date of October of next year, get that submitted to the state. And if we do locate any service lines that are either galvanized requiring replacement or lead, we want to make sure, we want to make our best effort to get those replaced by that October deadline. And I say our best effort, because it's not required to have them replaced by then. If you can't replace them by then, you simply have to have a plan in place to do so. Now, it's preferred if you replace them by October of 2024, because it reduces the reporting and monitoring requirement on the utility, so you're incentivized to get that done. So that's our goal, but there's no penalty if we don't get there. We're also working on finalizing that sampling plan, so we're including schools and daycares and making sure that we get our sample points located appropriately within the system. And then we're working towards initiating that public outreach and education effort through posting of materials on our website, developing some bill inserts, making information available through our annual drinking water report, or consumer confidence report as well. So that's really where we are. Future decisions that are going to come back to the board for action are, so if we find lead service lines, we're going to have to have a way of dealing with those. And really, that's going to require a couple of actions by y'all. We need to know how it is we're going to fund this program, because we have to do, we're going to have to replace those lead service lines or galvanized requiring replacement. So on the public side, as I said, keep that in mind, it's split, public and private. On the public side, it's pretty straightforward. This is something Union County would fund, and it's something Union County would execute. So that piece of it is fairly straightforward. It's really a binary option, as far as how you proceed, or a singular option for how you proceed. When you're talking about the private side, it's a little bit different, because the rule doesn't actually require you to replace that service line. What it does is it incentivizes the utility to replace it. Because if it's replaced, then that reporting and monitoring requirement is reduced. So options for doing that, you can treat it just like the public side. Union County can fund it, Union County can execute it. You could split that responsibility up, where maybe the customer undertakes the replacement, and Union County would reimburse them. There's also another option where the customer would be completely responsible for it. And there's probably a fourth option in there, where the, where Union County would execute the replacement, but the customer would be responsible for the cost up to, let's say, a cap amount. But that really hasn't been vetted out through our legal staff and how we would accomplish that. So I didn't want to list that in here as an option. But there's likely four options there for that private side replacement. So I told you I was going to be brief, and I think I met my goal there, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So I think one thing, and I believe John touched on this, is just to make you aware that when we start trying to identify those service lines, you may get calls from the public. No matter how diligent we are trying to get public information out there and educate the public on what we're doing, some people, they're not going to see it, they're not going to realize that's what we're doing. They're going to want to know, why are we digging holes in their yard? And they're going to call you. So we want you to be aware of it, because this is what we're doing. We're trying to meet our requirements for the compliance. Obviously, it's important, because lead in our system is something we need to address. But we just wanted to make sure you were aware, this is the path forward. We're going to do our best to notify all our residents that we're doing this, that are certainly water customers. But there will be some who just didn't see it, didn't understand that that's what we're doing, and you may get phone calls.
So one question that I have, that hasn't really been discussed, is that you would be using ARPA funds, 35 million. So do we know how much this project is going to be out of that balance?
So at this point in time, there are no ARPA funds set aside for this particular program. This is just the compliance portion for meeting the federal rule guidelines. There's been no ARPA money set aside for lead and copper at this point. What John indicated for is, once we know what we're up against, how many service lines we've identified, then we'll have to give an estimate of what that cost is. Then the board will have to make a decision on how we fund that. If that's all public, meaning it's all on our side, that's obviously going to come out of our Union County Water Utility Budget. If it is, some of it's on the private side, then we'll have to decide how we intend on handling the private side of it.
So you'll bring the budget information back to us at a later date?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, like I said before, we're really trying to draw a box around the magnitude of the problem, if there is one at all.
We're hopeful that we have very limited areas where we have lead or galvanized pipe, but we won't know until we finish the inventory.
John, you mentioned digging holes in people's yards.
Yes, sir.
Can we not do it with some of the water testing we do?
You have to physically inspect the service line material. So if you can't see it in the meter box, you would have to expose it outside the meter box, and you have to physically expose it. So you've got to dig a hole. There's simply no way.
Then you do a water test.
Pardon?
Then you do a water test of their...
So the issue is going to be that that's not going to determine where the actual issue is. So we can determine that there's lead in the water. Is it on the private side, or is it on the public side? We actually have to identify whether it's public or private. So that's why we're going to have to be able to put eyes on it. So the test won't act. It may give you the presence of it, but it's not going to tell you which side it's on.
Well, and just to be clear, we do sample our system routinely for lead, and we have very few positive results for it. So I talked with Junior Honeycutt, our distribution superintendent, about this. And just anecdotally, the lion's share of the samples that have come back where there was a positive test for lead, virtually, I think it was 90 to 95% of them were eliminated from consideration because there was an error in collecting the sample by the individual homeowner. So we changed how we did that, so that we had somebody present to hand them the sample bottle, explain the process, rather than just giving them a fact sheet and having them do it and pick up the sample bottle later. And all of those have come back negative. So by his recollection, and this is anecdotal, there've only been a handful of test results that showed trace amounts of lead. And he attributed those to areas where there was known to be copper with lead solder. So it's, that's inside the building, because you're physically taking that sample at a tap, like at your kitchen sink. It's not that service line material, it's between the meter and the building. So unfortunately, we don't have much choice but to expose it.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Yeah.
When we send our...
When we send our employees out, they're going to be talking with the citizens directly and trying to get, and taking the sample then, you said?
So it's not a sample, so to speak, at this point? The inventory is actually where we go out to the meter box, try to look in the meter box, see if we can determine the material in the meter box. If we cannot, then we'll have to expose the lines on either side. The public education portion is where we're going to reach out to those customers, let them know that we intend on coming on the property to have that evaluation done. We'll do that in a number of different forms, emails, you know, however we intend on going through that, we'll have a public communication strategy for that. But we will not necessarily be meeting with them individually, unless, of course, they wish to be there.
The question I ask is because I spoke to the sheriff earlier this morning, and hey, there's some scams going around, people doing solar panels or something like that. There's a lot of different people going to folks' houses and telling them, we could have, very well have people going out saying, well, your water's bad, and we need to do this, we need to do that. And we want to make sure that we're, you know, that we've included in that what we're doing, that there's no scams on senior citizens or other people that might be knowing that we're doing something, but not sure exactly what we're doing.
There's, as part of this activity, there's no replacement, there's no installation of anything. We're simply verifying what that material is, so that we can complete that inventory and then understand what it is we need to do to go back at a later date and replace those lines, if it's needed.
So in that communication, that might be what I would tell people, is that we're not selling anything.
We're not selling people anything, we're not replacing service lines. There's, you know, a sign here, you get, you know, 24 months free financing and all that fun stuff.
Yes, thank you.
No problem.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Next, we'll have a resolution on state ARPA funds for 762-Zone 24-inch transmission main project. And we'll have Clayton do this presentation.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We are asking you to take some action related to one of these state-funded projects. I also thought it'd be a good idea to just update you on our interactions with the state thus far on our other state-funded projects. So with the 762-Zone 24-inch transmission main, we were allocated 35 million in state ARPA funds. We've now received the funding offer letter from DEQ, and we are asking the board to take action to adopt a resolution to accept the funds and authorize the county manager to execute the necessary paperwork. On the Crooked Creek wastewater treatment plant, we were allocated 8 million in state ARPA funds for the land acquisition, design permitting, and construction for either a new plant in the Crooked Creek watershed, or expansion of the Poplin Road pump station. We submitted a request for reimbursement to the state for the purchase of Site B for 4.8 million. We've submitted some information on the proposed discharge from the site to DEQ and anticipate receiving information on speculative limits from them sometime in August. And once we receive that information, we believe we will also be able to receive the reimbursement. And for the remainder of the funds, we're requesting 3.2 million for Grassy Branch. The final project is the Walden Pond dredging project. We were allocated 400,000 in state funds. These are non-ARPA funds. We've done some work to identify a potential solution, and we are at the point where we need to engage an environmental engineer. So we've requested an 18-month extension for the project with anticipated completion in December 2024. And so we are asking you to take action specifically related to the 762-zone project. And those are the actions requested that are up on the screen. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have them.
Clayton, can you speak to what the anticipated cost is of this 762-transmission-zone project? And has that gone up, and if so, how much?
I believe I might turn to our water staff or our county manager to answer that question.
I'll be happy to answer that question. So originally, our estimate was around 25 million for that. Unfortunately, more recent estimates on the construction market, we do anticipate that it's going to be at 35 million or higher. Obviously, we haven't gone out to bid on this, so we anticipate we'll be using all of the funds from the state in order to complete the 762-transmission project.
Okay, so in other words, at least $10 million in additional expense, perhaps more?
It certainly could be, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You may or may not be able to answer this, but the county manager may. Have we received the money from the state for Site B?
We have not.
We have not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there are not any more questions, action is requested. And there are two parts to this, to the motion, if anyone would like to make that motion.
The first part is that we accept the funding for the, for the, or to go ahead and allocate the funding for the project 762...
Yes.
First, I...
762.
Is to adopt the resolution to accept the funds.
Okay. And then the second part would be to authorize what?
County manager to execute all documents.
Make that motion, is that good enough? Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions regarding the motion?
Can we go back to the next screen? So, Crooked Creek, this information, $8 million is a separate issue, or is that included in the...
No, this is just an update on the other state-funded projects that we have going, and our interactions with the state related to them. The only action you're taking tonight is related to that 35 million.
Okay.
Okay, hearing no other questions or comments, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, none of this motion passes, 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have revised scope for Ottawa Road widening candidate project. I'll turn this over to Bjorn Hansen.
Meeting Chairman, members of the board, Manager Matthews. This is a unique opportunity to take a project that doesn't have much of a purpose right now and turn it into something that could have a lot of purpose. So the lifespan of a project, and why we're really hopeful that we can get this amendment approved, is that first, we have to identify projects. Then we have to submit them to CARCO or NCDOT Division 10 in order to be prioritized. They don't submit all the projects they receive. They get more projects than they have slots to be able to submit. And of the ones that get submitted, only a fraction actually get funded. And then they go through the arduous process of getting designed and actually built. So we have the potential of getting all the way into spot number three with this action, which is really good. What we're talking about is Ottawa Road, going out from Mecklenburg County to Hemby Bridge. There's really four distinct portions of it. The first section is funded, that's right at the interchange to 485. The second section used to be a part of this, but it was split out. And that was because there was agreement on the design for the green phase, but the red phase Stallings did not like. It was essentially a super street or reduce-conflict intersection type of design, similar to Monroe Road and other projects, where there's often a lot of heartburn over the design at the intersections, so that it's hard to get through and make left turns. So Stallings pulled the project. They said, we don't want, if this is going to be the design, just pull it from the stiff. And that happened in the last six months. There is still a phase south of Stevens Mill Road, the one in purple, that goes down to Hemby Bridge. Same type of project, a widening. It's not funded, it's lower in the list, it's a candidate project. But it doesn't make much sense for this project to exist if the red section doesn't have any project. So if the purple one were actually funded, it would take a four-lane road and put it back into a two-lane road. At the same time, our critical intersection process is underway, and we are essentially done with the analysis work. We have our top 15, now we're going into the adoption process in September and October. These two intersections in Hemby Bridge, that I'll zoom in on in a minute, score extremely well as a project. The problem is they're very expensive. You have all kinds of complications. Hemby Bridge has virtually no budget, so they can't be a participant coming up with local money for the design, or I'm sorry, the implementation grants that we... local money for the design, or I'm sorry, the implementation grants that we get through CARPPO periodically. Indian Trail has a portion of the intersection, but they're not going to cover all of the match, and we're certainly not going to cover the match that Hemby Bridge doesn't. So we're in a bit of a pickle. Plus, it's an expensive project, and it would be a challenge to come up with a match anyway. So what we propose is that we re-scope the purple phase of the project to just the intersections in Hemby Bridge, and that's what gets submitted for consideration. We have this opportunity right now because CARPPO is out for their public comment period through July 22nd, literally the end of the week. So we can comment on projects, we can revise projects, we can submit new projects. They do have 47 slots available. That covers three counties, it covers all the projects that have already been submitted previously and didn't get funded. They're at the head of the line. We're able to essentially get in the line by virtue of taking an existing project and modifying it. So this project 10 years ago, nine years ago, was actually in CARPPO's long-range plan, so it had a 25- to 30-year horizon to be built. 10 years, nine years later, it's not in their fiscally constrained plan, so it's actually moved backwards. And that's really a reflection of the lack of buying power between the DOT and CARPPO to fund projects. So we need to be realistic. We presented this information to Stallings and Indian Trail and Hemby Bridge. They've all agreed with this rationale. Hemby Bridge, I'm sorry, Stallings and Indian Trail took action this past week, Hemby Bridge doesn't meet in July. They aren't a member of CARPPO, so we can act on their behalf. I've already spoken with Mayor Presley, and he agrees with this rationale. We'll go to them for a resolution in August. But the request of you is to approve a resolution endorsing these changes that we can submit to CARPPO this week, along with the letters of support from both Stallings and Indian Trail. So, I'm sorry. So the specifics of the project, again, you're looking at Mill Grove and Idlewild, and then Seifer Shortcut/idlewild at Indian Trail Fairview on the southern end near the Bridge Restaurant. You have buildings, you have floodplain, you have bridges, you have utility lines. It will be complex. So by having this as a STIP project, the DOT will manage it. We aren't providing any local match, it's on them. So in terms of the municipal limits, the majority of it is in Hemby Bridge. This is where the Food Lion Shopping Center is, that's really the only part of Indian Trail. So they would benefit from this clearly, as would Stallings, but in terms of the major footprint, it's Hemby Bridge. So the requested action is to approve the resolution modifying this project, adjust these intersections and the section between them, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I don't have any questions, but I'll just say, I mean, I'm inclined to support this. I mean, our experience seems to be that intersection projects, they score well, and they tend to get developed, whereas widening tends to languish and get delayed if it ever gets done. So I'll be supporting this.
What's the impact on buildings? The Bridge Restaurant, and there's a shell on the other station. That's just widening of the street there?
Well, first off, there is no design for it, so I can't say what the specific impacts or footprint would be of the widened facility. But it would be just the intersection here. It could be turn lanes, it could be a roundabout, it could be a reorientation of the road, we don't know. And the same would happen down here. And I'm well aware, as is the mayor of Hemby Bridge, of the impacts at that intersection of an improved road, but it's just to be determined.
And I just want to clarify that the previous scope Stallings did not support, but they do support this one.
This was outside of that funded project, this is further to the south. They agreed with the rationale. The only reason we reached out to them was not because this was in their jurisdiction, but they would be impacted, maybe for some reason they wanted that multi-lane road leading into Stallings. They didn't, they recognized the rationale of this amendment.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments?
I'll make the motion to support the resolution.
Okay. We have a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to appointments to boards and committees. We have consideration of appointments to boards and committees from the applications received. We have the Agricultural Advisory Board. Looks like vacancies have been advertised and applications have been received. We have five applications, three were reappointments.
Ms. Chairman, or Vice Chair, I'd like to make the motion to appoint, reappoint the three to that committee. They've been long-serving and done very well on that, so I think there's some opportunities for some of the others that had applied to go. I think they've also applied for some other boards on this agenda. So I'd make the motion to reappoint, unrelate them, Travis Starnes and...
Alex Simpson.
Alex Simpson.
Okay, any questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then we have the Water Solutions Advisory Committee. The Water Solutions Committee was established at our April 17th meeting for the purpose of reviewing water services in Union County, and will be composed of 12 members. Two members from the Agricultural Committee, four members from any of the county's municipalities that are not currently serving by a public water system, and six members from unincorporated Union County. These vacancies have been advertised in accordance with the board's rules and procedures, and we have 13 applicants. Yes?
We have, how many from the Agriculture Committee or Community did we have? Did any of them indicate that on there? Since we have 12 positions and 13 with the scope of this board, you know, I'd make a recommendation to my fellow board members that maybe we appoint all 13 and do one as an alternate in case somebody falls out or has to drop out. I would, I think we had Ms. Kathy Price, she had applied on the other, so we definitely want to make her, I think, a board member on this one. But Andrew Balkum, possibly, and this is the Andrew that works with the county, correct? If we have the agriculture members filled in already, maybe possibly make him the alternate since he is a county, or works for, does work with the county. Anybody have any thoughts about that?
I would support naming all 13 that applied with the alternate recommendation you have made for Mr. Balkum. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
So 2-2, motion fails. Okay, I'll turn it over to our county manager, Brian Matthews, for comments.
I do have a comment. Vice Chairman, in a previous meeting, we did have some residents who attended, and they spoke out about a concern with odor in their developments, the heritage development. I did want to make the board aware that the staff heard their concerns, we understand the issue. We are going to hire a consulting...
I'm sorry, thank you. Chris, I did not have my volume on. We're going to hire a consulting engineer, a third party, to evaluate possible solutions to mitigate the issue and also scope out what the cost may be for that. I do want to point out, we are not saying at this point in time that the county is financially going to be responsible for moving those lines or whatever the mitigation strategy might be, but I do think it's important that we try to evaluate that and provide what alternatives may work. So I just want to make the board aware of that and the public is aware that we did hear their concerns, we want to be part of, you know, coming up with a strategy. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We now have Commissioner comments. I'll start with Commissioner Helms.
No comment.
Commissioner Williams?
No comments tonight.
Okay, I have no comments tonight. Commissioner Rushing?
I would just say thank you again to Vice Chair Merrill for handling the meeting tonight. Hopefully, next meeting, my side will be much better. I would like to thank the young lady from the 4H. 4H is a great organization. If you've never been involved or had your kids involved in 4H, we believe in it. There's a fundraiser coming up soon, I believe in August, September timeframe. Parker Mills and Jerry Simpson would both be able to get you some tickets or give you more information on that. I volunteered years ago with my sisters in Stanley County. I volunteered in Scotland County when I was a young man out of college, and I volunteered with Union County folks, helping them with them coming to the range and shooting and doing clubs with their 4H groups. So again, if you want to look for a great organization to belong to or volunteer with, 4H is definitely something you should look at. And with that, I will take a motion to close the agenda or close the meeting. All right? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.